Welcome all to the February 13th Planning Board Meeting. First thing, I'd like to welcome our new liaison, Ben Dietz. Thank you for joining us. As always, we look at the planning board meeting minutes from this case to January 16th meeting. Paid a few bills. We extended the Bloom minor subdivision, final submission deadline, the SH29 Westneck extension resolution extending their final submission date, the White Roadway Bond Extension Resolution, and a lot line adjustment for 6 Daniel Lord Road and 3 Borough Hall. We continued the Flowers Wetland application public hearing. We had public hearings on the Michael Wetland application and the Stitch application. And I think this is fairly detailed and putting together. Does anyone have any? So comments, so I make a motion to accept the January 16th planning board minutes. A second. All in favor?
Hi.
We have two invoices for the Reiner Group. As I mentioned before, they're dividing into wetland permits and subdivisions and site plan review. For the wetlands permits for the month of January totaled $1,196.25. It was mostly work on Tesoro and some minor work on a new application. We have Beagleman. On the subdivision and site plan review, it's mostly working on 6 Daniel Lord Road and attending a planning board meeting, and that totaled $495, making the total $1,691.25 for the month of January. As always, this is very helpful, so I make a motion to accept the Reiner Group January invoice for $1,691.25. All in favor? We have two resolutions to act on tonight. The first deals with Michael at Two Bay Avenue, wetlands application. Beth has drafted a resolution for us. And I think we were generally in agreement with this. The findings, just briefly summarizing, that we find the planning board finds that the proposed application meets the criteria set forth in 129.5 of the code. Specifically, the board finds that the project will not negatively impact value function or size of the wetlands because the applicant is proposing to develop the property in a way that eliminates a significant number of improvements from the VB vegetative buffer and the ARA, the adjacent regulated area. Moreover, the proposed mitigation is clued but not limited to an upgraded sanitary system, stormwater recharge dry wells that will offset any potential negative impacts to the wetlands. The project will not have a negative impact on the quality or quantity of groundwater because they're upgrading an outdated sanitary system, locating it beyond 100 feet back from the wetlands, and installing stormwater collecting dry wells, and I'm just summarizing. Reduction of total number of bedrooms and reducing weather on the site. I've demonstrated the project will not create a net increase of risk of runoff because of dry wells and revegetation of the vegetative buffer. The applicant's proposing to redevelop the already improved lot, and the proposed project is the best alternative because it is a smaller scope project than was previously approved by the Town Board in 2022, based on site constraints, non-conformal size, and as a corner lot, there are little or no opportunities to increase setbacks from upland edge of wetlands. The board finds that the request to locate the 1,000 gallon propane tank proposed within 100 feet of the wetlands would negatively impact the wetlands and that the tank could be relocated outside of the wetlands jurisdiction. The board is considered and agrees with the report submitted by the CAC, which recommends that the tank be relocated. And then list the plans developed by Matt Sherman and Liberty Landscaping. Then the additional conditions were the applicant shall install wire backed silt fence runoff until the disturbed areas are stabilized. The silt fencing is already in place. I do take issue with the fact that it isn't towed in. I don't know that we necessarily have to put it in here as an additional condition unless you guys feel like there should be a reminder of that.
I think it should be in there. I personally don't.
Since they've already installed it once and didn't do it, it makes me think that we probably should be explicit.
Okay, so I'm going to add to that. Silt fencing to be towed in.
I had mentioned that once before.
Yeah, it was mentioned during the thing.
I think Beth just missed it in the notes. It's all good.
I didn't know if she thought it was not our purview to mention that or not. Applicant shall provide installed stormwater collection and recharge dry wells per plan, revegetated with the further approved landscape plan, install a low flow pump, well pump, five gallons per minute for water conservation. Swimming pool shall have an automatic pool cover. The applicant shall relocate the proposed tank out of the 100 foot setback. This is only going to be valid for two years. And upon completion of the project, the town's environmental consultant shall review that the vegetative plan has been met, that approved plan has been met. So I'm happy with this. Do you have any comments?
No. With that one addition, I think it's perfect.
So I make a motion to accept resolution number 11, 2024, for the Michaels residence at Two Bay Avenue. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Well, we'll just mention it. The CAC pointed out that they did not want the crate myrtle to be located over the septic system, and I'll just mention that as an aside in the cover letter to the applicant. The next application is for 58 Westmoreland Drive, Stitch Residence. I am the designer on the project, I must excuse myself. I will ask as before, do you guys mind if I sit out in the hallway?
Yeah, sure.
Yes.
All right, so you're going to stitch. So they're taking out a tennis court, putting in swimming pool there, getting rid of the old pool. Everything is outside of the vegetative buffer. The proposed action, let's go to the side. The proposed action and location will not create a risk of impairing the function and the value of the wetlands buffer. The answer is no, and it's actually going to improve it because they're going to put some plantings in there. And the proposed action, the project will not diminish any wetland in size. No, I don't. The proposed project will not have a negative impact on the quantity and quality of groundwater. It's actually going to improve it. They're putting a cover for the pool to control evaporation. The proposed project will not create a net increase in the risk of runoff. No, it's going to reduce the runoff with the buffer there.
Dry wells.
The dry wells. The applicant has demonstrated that there are no practicable alternatives which allow the project to be constructed outside the regulated area. Practical alternatives are presumed to be available unless the applicant clearly demonstrates otherwise. So the CAC wanted them to move it to the left, but that's where they're putting in the IA system, and otherwise they couldn't do it, you know? Come on. So I'm in favor of all this, and I'd like to make a motion to accept this resolution.
Yes, I agree.
Do we get a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Well, good.
They're putting in that extra vegetative buffer.
Currently, there isn't anything there.
That's a big win right there.
So it's nice to get a lot of grease droppings and stuff.
It's just a terrace to the sand.
You did the thing on it, right? You were there.
Yeah, we both were there. And that was one of the first things we looked at, was the fact that there is a nice vegetative buffer, but there's a cutout where the grass is rolling down to the beach, down at sand. And the CFC recommended that. I totally agree with that.
Yeah, and that's in approval condition.
Yeah. Okay, so we're done. Stand back in here.
Pretty easy one. Experience came to things.
I just got some wine out of it.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the continuance of the Flower public hearing. It's continued from January 16th, and the applicant has submitted new plans. Matt, do you want to review the changes to the design for us?
Yeah, it's good evening. Thank you, Matt Sherman, here representing the Flowers. Their architect, who was here last meeting, is on Zoom as well. If there's any questions for him during this continuation of the hearing, as well as one of the property owners is here as well, if you've got any questions for them. Basically, just to give a real quick recap, we have an existing building. It's right at grade at about a six foot, five to six foot elevation. It has been getting flooded almost routinely now. So this application, which was already approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals, is to basically pick this building up, get it above the flood zone, give them a little bit of extra room so that they've got a little factor of safety over that flood zone elevation. We went through the whole thing at the last hearing. The issues that came up, or the main issue that came up, was that we were asking for more coverage within the vegetated buffer. And the town code says we can't do that. We've got that 100 square foot exemption that we can apply, but we can't do anything more than that. And so what we ended up doing was removing some of the front steps that face out onto Chiquit Avenue. So we removed about 60 square feet, give or take, of those front steps so that we're down to 60 square feet left within the vegetated buffer.
Yep.
There was a set of stairs that went up to the electric meter that was on the west side of the building. We've checked with PSE and G, and we can bring that electric meter down so it's right at six feet above grade, which gets us above the flood elevation, putting it on one of the piers that's supporting the building. So we were able to remove that 40-plus square feet of decking and stairs from the west side of the building, so that's gone away completely. And then we had a 50-square-foot plus or minus stair that was coming off of the existing deck on the water side of the house, since that is going from just a couple of feet above grade to eight feet above grade, we have to get stairs up to it. We were trying to use an area of an existing walkway in order to put those new stairs in. The walkway isn't really substantial. It's basically a slate paver set on the ground, so we weren't able to do that. So what we've done is, we're still removing that 50-plus or minus square feet of steps and walkway, but the new stairs going up to that deck are now within the footprint of the deck as it currently exists. So it was 500, or it currently is 557 square feet of decking on the water side of the house. It will still be 557 square feet or slightly less than that because of the way the stairs lay out. So the square footage of coverage within the vegetated buffer doesn't change as far as that deck is concerned at all. So we basically take what was the CAC's recommendation of utilizing the existing footprint, and that's what we ended up doing with that deck on the water side. So basically, we've got another 60 square feet of coverage within the vegetated buffer, which is what we're using to get into the front door of the house. Other than that, we've got 61 square feet of decking that's within the adjacent regulated area. That's new, and then everything else is existing. So basically, we've got that 60 square feet of new coverage within the vegetative buffer is really the biggest thing here.
And were you able to do anything? Were you able to do anything more with the dry wells? Or is that, because I know you were running into problems, having a hard time meeting the two-inch rainfall.
Yeah, and it is what it is on that. We just don't have the square footage, and I can't go any shallower than those. I've got the shallowest leaching chambers I could find, which were at, I think, what did we have on these guys? An eight-inch deep leaching chamber. I just can't get anything shallower than that. So, you know, like I said, we're collecting zero now. We'll be collecting 35%, 33% of it on the water side of the house. So that's only a quarter, a third or a quarter of the house. For the vast majority of the house, we're collecting all of it. So it is not perfect, but it's significantly better.
It's much better.
Yeah.
Much better. We did get your updated review of the bulkhead from a marine contractor in Riverhead.
Four or five years.
Saying the life of it's four or five years.
They said just as long as there's no heavy machinery in the bulkhead, no bracing or attachments to the bulkhead, and no dredging. And that, as you said, David, likely it'll be four to five more years out of it.
Yeah. So what we'll end up doing to make sure that we don't cause any damage to that bulkhead is, normally you wouldn't put a project limiting fence in the middle of the area between the house and the bulkhead, but we'll end up doing that so that there can't be anybody getting too close to that bulkhead. There's not going to be heavy equipment over there anyway, but we'll just make sure that we've kind of gone to a little bit above and beyond would be normal practice in order to protect that, so that we don't want to have any untimely demise of that bulkhead any more than anybody else does.
Yeah, I still personally recommend replacing it now during construction and studying, tearing the site up now and then tearing it up again in a couple of years. We can't force you to do that. All we can do is recommend good construction practice, and what you take it is what it is.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Do you guys have any more questions about this project?
No, I feel good about it.
Yeah, I don't think we have any more questions. I think, I appreciate that in the group.
Yeah, good work getting it.
Taking the feedback and doing good work, I think.
Now, they got a plan.
Yeah. Okay, so I guess.
Just open it up to.
Yeah, if anybody wants to say. Oh, I'm sorry. Would anyone like to make a comment about, there's no one here. I'm sorry. My apologies. Benji, have something to say about this application?
No, I support this one.
Okay. Does anyone out in Zoom have any questions about this application? No questions. So I will make a motion to close the Flower public hearing for ten to Chiquit Avenue. Do I have a second?
Second.
Well, I'll second that, yes. Yeah. Marcus did it first.
Hi.
Hi. And that closes our business meeting.
Okay.
That's good.
Going to the work session, current applications, this would be subdivision lot line change applications. We have the Bloom minor subdivision. Last month, we extended the final application deadline date to July 11.
Yep.
SH29 Westneck LLC lot line adjustment. We're waiting on the deeds to be recorded. We're extending that. We extended that to March 1st last meeting. White Roadway Construction, they had to put in a few more monuments, do some minor items, so last month, we extended that to March 1st. Hopefully, that was the last time we had to extend that application. 6 Daniel Lord Road LLC and 3 Borough Hall Lane LLC lot line adjustment. We approved the lot line adjustment last month, and we are now waiting on proof of filing of the deeds. They actually have to get deeds to Beth Baldwin first for her review and filing, and then they have a deadline currently for this work, it's July 11th. We do have a new, did receive a new lot line adjustment, the Elliott Bowesman lot line adjustment, and Joe did put a memo together for us.
Yeah, go ahead. Hour two.
He just got it.
Everything good.
Yeah, very, very recent. And Joe, are you up there?
Yes, I am.
Do you want to walk us through that memo quickly?
This application is intended to, I guess, legitimize some lot line adjustments that have already taken place. I guess what's happened is the Elliott's have gone to the Health Department to do some changes to their site, to get approved, some changes to the site, including the installation of an IA system. And the Health Department took a look at the map and said, you don't match the 1981 tax maps and what has taken place. And Matt had done some research, and there was a change of lot lines between two parcels. And what's happened is parcel A, which is at 8 A Joy Drive, was 30,839 square feet. It's in a C-zone where the minimum required area is 40,000 square foot. And the parcel that was owned by Andrew and Melissa Elliott was 75,437 square feet. And both of the parcels are improved with residences. And so sometime, it's a little difficult to follow the timeline when all these things might have taken place, but around 1998, the lots were reconfigured. There was a transfer of 25,887 square feet from parcel A, I'm sorry, from parcel B to parcel A. As a result, parcel B was reduced to 49,550 square feet, and parcel A was increased in size to 56,726 square feet. As a result of this reconfiguration, parcel A was made conforming with respect to minimum lot area in the C-zone. I was able to review the map and review a series of deeds that were provided. And there are some discrepancies between the maps and the deeds. There are some discrepancies between deeds, and the next almost two pages has to do with some of the changes. And it's not as onerous as one would think because these things might show up in two deeds in the map. If you correct it, you're correcting several items instead of just one at a time kind of thing. And really, I would just, these changes, although they're numerous, don't really materially affect the lot line modification that has already taken place. So basically, what I would recommend is, board consider scheduling a public hearing on the lot line modification, and as a condition of approval, we get a revised map submitted and also revised deeds. So everything matches, and everything gets filed, and it's all cleaned up. And I think that's about it.
Matt Sherman is the applicant's representative. Walk us through the last couple of months, the problems with the history of this application. And it does look like something that really needs to be cleaned up. And by doing so, this will allow them to go to the Health Department and put in new sanitary systems, do the Health Department subdivision process, which then will enable them to put the sanitary system upgrade in place. So I think this is okay to set a public hearing on. It makes sense. So Beth and I, Charlie, to write the notice for this.
No problem.
Thank you. Great. So that's for next month. Now on to other business. We have a new website. I've gotten a couple demonstrations of this one already, but for those who haven't, I think it's worthwhile if Christina can walk us through. The new website's going live Thursday between 10:30 and 11:00 AM, if I got my math right.
Yeah, it's roughly, we're hoping.
Something will happen between 10:00 and 11:00. That's usually works.
All right, let's just collapse.
It's pretty. It's purty.
Yes.
So when you look at the website at nighttime, it's going to have this sunset, and during the day, it's going to have a nice sunny scene.
Oh, wow.
So here, I give a demonstration today that was more focused towards the public. Right now, I'll focus more on your use.
Sure.
So this is the homepage. We try to adhere to the same lingo as we currently have. Everybody, members of the public, including you, can create their own sign-in for the website. This will, it's mainly designed for the public, but you are free to do that as well. If you create a sign-in, it will allow you to sign up for notifications for all the different topics that comes across the town, agendas, alerts, inter-bids, calendar, news, jobs posting and such. But for you as a board, as some of you probably sign into your email or to the SharePoint from the homepage, we adhere to the same standard. It's right here behind that. You see it behind the tab, right here, down here.
Okay.
Yeah, I would have to go move that tab on the back computer, but it's there. The same thing, employee email, Town SharePoint. We go to the government. We can find a planning board on the committees and boards. And this is your page. It has a clerk over here. I just noticed earlier today that it's missing the committee access for the SharePoint over here. I will make sure it will be added. I made a note that it's something.
Great, because that's where I always act.
That's where you are.
I don't.
You don't go through the homepage? Yeah, it will be added here as well. I made a note I discovered today as I was browsing through. It also has calendar. This calendar is automated just for the planning board meetings. Link to the agendas and the minutes. It has a nice collapsible menu for the members and the town liaisons. The best practice that was recommended to us was that the page shouldn't have more than three scrolls, so we tried to. shouldn't have more than three scrolls. So we tried to be very compact, even with the form subdivision wetlands application. It's all collapsed within those logo buttons. And all the documents, all the applications and the subsequent documents are updated in the order as they come in.
After the, after the wetlands application is accepted, or like it's, we're done, does it go off that list in someplace else?
It will, it is removed. That's correct. As now it is manually removed, it will be removed as well. We have agenda center that can be accessed from the homepage or through this link. You can choose several different agendas. So this is the, yes. So if you're looking only for a planning board, you only check the planning board. If you're looking for committees or town board, you can select those as well. As you can see right now, we uploaded some planning board minutes from 2023. But eventually, we will create a little more robust library over here. If I show you the town board, that also has a YouTube links to each meeting as well. So eventually, down the road in a year or so, we will have nicely listed agenda minutes and the meeting in one spot. If you ever need to access the meeting via Zoom, you can go through the planning board page, or you can go through the calendar over here. The reason why we chose this layout was the dominant appearance of the calendar on the homepage. Again, you can choose the calendar, whichever you would like to follow or subscribe to or just look at. If you look at a planning board, it will list all the meetings for the upcoming month. So today, we have the only one for the February. If we click on that meeting, it will give us the location of the meeting, but also the Zoom link. And if the agenda would be posted over here, it would be listed over here as a PDF to click on. So that's done.
That's great.
If we naturally anticipate some hiccups, if you are using website actively, any page, and you stumble upon PDF that is not uploaded correctly, or the link that doesn't work, please reach out to whoever, Kevin, me, or Clark.
Do you want everyone to reach out to you, or do you want people to funnel through me to go to you?
You can, no, not necessarily. Yeah, you can reach out directly. Yes, we're anticipating. It's, it's perfect planning that it will go live on Thursday. So on Sunday, we can all leave to Association of Towns and Kevin's on his own. Yes, feel free to reach out directly to any of us. No need to file through town board member or through chair. You can reach out directly to IP department. All right.
Thank you.
That's good.
Next thing, last Tuesday, the, during the town board work session, town board agreed or asked us to review the 100-square-foot wetlands exemption in an administrative process. That's had been discussed briefly earlier on, but was more of a public discussion at the town board level. And the town board unanimously gave nods to, for us to do so. So we have to develop a, a process of doing this. I've asked them to codify this going forth. I don't know if this is going to remain in our hands. Today, the town board discussed removing wetlands review from us completely, or going back to the old format. So giving us this new authority and then stripping the original one seems a little odd. So I don't know how much we are going to be doing of this. But it does seem to make sense currently that we have two that we're going to discuss today. But they are, they were submitted under a full wetlands application. And these are more of a administrative look to see whether or not the 100-square-foot exemption had been used in the past. And whether the application can use that 100-square-foot exemption or must file a full wetlands application. So currently, the ones we have in front of us are a full, a full wetlands application. I, I don't think that if these keep coming to us, that a full application is needed due to the extensive detail of what we require. And so we should be discussing what we need the applicant to submit with us, for us. Obviously, we need a survey that would be the same that they use to get to a denial letter or a wetlands application, which has to have the wetlands delineated by an environmentalist, has to be within five years old. In the case of where it's just beachfront, the surveyor usually designates mean high watermark. We need to know all the structures on the property. I think, I, I don't know if we have to go so far as asking for two-foot contours, but that's what's usually required for if they're going to file with the DEC, which they would probably have to do anyway. So then they would have it on. So we need the full DEC.
It seems like it.
Also, level of.
So I think.
Don't we also have to make a recommendation to the town board for fee? Like, we make the recommendation.
Well, yeah. Yeah, I think that, let's, let's go through what else we need to have them submit. I guess, proof, certificate of occupancies for any of structure that preexists the 2000 of July, 2001 adoption of the Wetlands Code. Do we have a copy of, you want to pull up a copy of the application?
I was just looking at wetlands applications.
Do you have one?
Yeah, I have one right here. Yeah, I was just looking at one for Ramshead as an exemplar.
Because we have the, the checklist.
The checklist.
Test checklist. So maybe, maybe we, instead of spending a lot of time on that right now, we can just say, let's, let's all take a look at it as a group.
Yeah.
And even maybe just sending an email around with ideas of what needs to be included, what maybe doesn't need to be included.
So I guess my only question would be is, how much of that we can do via email versus in our open, because of quorum stuff?
Well, this is just, this is just procedural.
Yeah.
So we're just, we're just trying to discuss a form. We're going to.
Then we'll propose it and open it up. Yeah, great.
Um, I just, I think it might be better if we have a proposed form, and then the board can make comments.
Okay.
Rather than having discussions via email.
So print out copies and then next week, go through them all? Or, or I'll mark up something and then come in and speak about it?
Every, yeah, every, maybe we each take our own individual, you know, look at it.
Yeah.
And we come in and talk, discuss.
Absolutely.
And the, let me make sure I understand this. I want to make sure, is the idea is, if we wanted to have a simplified wetlands permit, if it's only involves 100 square foot, is that, is that?
It's just streamlined.
Basically.
Well, right now, you need no permit.
Yeah, it's another permit.
It's not, it's not a permit. It's a review
Okay.
of, of whether the property
Has used it before.
Has used it before, or if they have. And it's structures that are in the vegetative buffer that exist prior to July 2001.
Grandfather.
This is about structures that were put in from July 2001 onward. And if, if a structure exists, they, they have the ability to take it out and put another, but as long as they don't go over 100 square feet. So they.
So this is to create a form to determine if it's applicable?
Yes.
Instead of going through everything else and coming down to that?
Exactly.
But how does the form do that when you need like satellite images?
So.
Well, that's for us to.
I think we, we have to do some legwork too. But we're asking for specific information from the applicant that helps us out.
I think that's part of it is, if, if the applicant wants to do this, then they should be, it's on them, the onus should be on them to provide information.
Yeah.
Allows.
Just watch it live.
So I think that's what the, the checklist has to probably have, something like that.
But the idea is to simplify so they don't have to do a long application form and submit everything.
I think if we each go spend, you know, some time, noggins, think about through what we think collectively together, that'd be a good work session.
And then going to your point about fee.
Yeah.
Currently, the application fee, the wetlands application fee, we just raised. The town board hadn't addressed raising it for decades or a very long time. We had it raised to $1,000 just two months ago. So the new, the current applications come in with a $1,000 fee, but that seems like a lot of money for this simple review. So it was previously $250. I mean, Beth's going to have to do, write a short memo. I don't know that it merits a huge fee.
It, it seems like that's something we should discuss post, once we figure out what the, what it looks like. Because then we'll be able to kind of know how heavy does it feel from a outside resource for like Beth having to write something or.
It wouldn't be going to Joe, for example, if not.
No.
I think so.
Engineer and.
So it should, it should be less. But I have a bunch of thoughts that I think we should discuss, because I think it kind of depends on, like, where's the 100 square feet, and what, what else might be affected. And there's lots of other considerations.
Yeah, I, I agree that the, the fee should be considered once we have at least a prototype or a, you know, a, a draft of what the.
But I would agree, it should be less than 1,000. Yeah, that's for sure.
Also, just keep in mind that the town board will actually set the fee. The board can make a recommendation to the town board. But the town board ultimately would file a resolution.
Yeah, but once, if we can scope the idea of how much effort it's going to take, that would help them hopefully make a decision on the price. So. Thanks, Beth.
Okay, so we go on to wetlands permit applications. We close out the flower application at 10 Chequid Avenue.
Yeah. Discussion if you wanted to. You want to jump into discussion? Do you want to go through them all first?
Well, we jump into the discussion chronologically. Happy with the reduction in square footage. As we usually do, let me go through the criteria for the
Yeah.
permit issuance. Proposed action and location will not create a risk of impairing the function and value of the wetlands buffer within, oh. Oh, sorry. Findings of fact. Subject property is a corner, no, that's, that's.
I don't have a clean list of what it.
10 Chequid.
Do you have the clean list?
No, no, that's the same, the same list. Anyway.
It's a governing law.
Yeah, the governing law. So the proposed action, well, action and location will not create impairment of function, value of the wetlands. I, I don't think it will. We're adding drywells. We're not spanning the footprint.
Yeah, that's huge.
Yeah. I wouldn't mind seeing the new deck have open gaps between boards for water to go through.
Yes, I agree.
This is on Heights Sewer and Heights Water. So there's no well, there's no sanitary system. So I think that clears. We're also, they're also going to put self-fencing up in a way that protects the existing bulkhead. Proposed project will not diminish any wetland size. There is no wetlands. It's a bulkhead property. It's just, so it's not diminishing any wetlands. Will not have a negative impact on the quality and quantity of groundwater. It's Heights Water, Heights Sewer. So that's, and recharging water. Will not create a net increase in risk of runoff. It's doing the opposite since it's reducing it.
Yeah.
When there's nothing there now.
The applicant has demonstrated that there are no practical alternatives which allow the project to be constructed outside of the regulated area. And we know that's.
Yeah. Take it all down. It's gone. It's the only option.
Yeah. So then, any conditions that you guys are thinking of for Beth to write into her resolution?
I think what you mentioned about the water flow through the, through the airway at the decks is, is good. I think that's key.
Quarter inch or such gaps between the boards.
The fence between the bulkhead at 10 feet away.
Yeah, let's just substantiate. So both, so fencing will be towed in, properly installed 10 feet away from the bulkhead. And I think it's worthwhile just putting in the memo that we, that we recommend that the, they consider replacing the bulkhead at the same time as they're doing all this work. Instead of coming back in four years and tearing the whole place up again. Do you guys have anything else?
Um, did you want to include anything else from the Reeves doc evaluation about, you know, the machinery, just some of the information? Or is it, I mean, it's not, that recommendation letter is not attached to the resolution. So do you want to?
Beth, is, would it be appropriate for us to? So I, I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm thinking out loud here. The one thing is, the, the latest doc, the bulkhead condition report we got was from a marine installer. It was not from an engineer. So, so it's not a true condition of the, of the bulkhead. I think if we really wanted to put some cautionary tales of stay in there, we'd need to do it with an engineer's perspective. I, I don't know if that opens us up to too much liability by suggesting construction methodology.
Yeah.
What, what do you think about that, Beth?
Well, I think Matt already mentioned that they're not going to be using any heavy minish, any heavy minish machinery, sorry. That they're not proposing to use any heavy machinery on that side. So I think it's fair that we can, you know, based on his comments, say that, you know, no heavy machinery will be used.
Yeah, so it's okay for us to say.
That's the most, that is the only delicate area that we have. So I'm just trying to think of, you know, do we need?
Okay, that's fair.
That's fair.
So within what, what was, 10 feet?
Yeah. Within 10 feet of the bulkhead.
I think Matt said he's going to put a fence there.
Yeah, that's, I think if we just say no heavy machinery within 10 feet of the bulkhead.
It's a simple, it's just covers it, I think.
Just that the lot is so small, you know, in construction, we place to put things.
It is.
Yeah, we'll need, we'll need the conditions of all marking and material storage on the property.
Yeah.
No blocking of Chequid Avenue.
Yeah.
At all.
Yeah. The thing, the HOA request, which is, is appropriate.
Yeah, I think that's, that's pretty much it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have all you need, Beth?
Yes, I'm good.
Awesome. Thank you. Next wetlands application is to Soro at 1 Seagate, Seagull Road. We are still waiting on information from the applicant. And I think they've commissioned the surveyor to return to pick up the sandbox and some of the other things that we discussed. And provide us, we also need a grading plan for the project.
Yeah.
Julia and I went and looked at it this week, yesterday. And it is a very tight-built property. And so I think this additional information will be important.
Have this been referred to CICF? Not yet.
I don't think.
I, I don't see why we can at this point. We are waiting on, maybe we should wait until they have complete package before they look at one and then have to look at it.
Like we did. Save them the trouble.
Okay.
Yeah.
We have another wetlands application, Beagleman Holding at 85 Ram Island Drive. And we, we just got this. There wasn't enough time to put an engineer's memo together. So we'll discuss that with Joe's memo next.
Yeah, that's what I was just thinking.
Oh, yeah, who wants to do that?
I can do.
I'll do it.
I haven't done one for a moment.
Okay.
If you don't mind working with me.
No. I'll be late next week.
Okay. Actually, we're going to be, I'm going to be up there.
Oh, you're, okay.
So I'll be back on Thursday. We can do it late next week, or the weekend. We'll talk.
Okay, so the next one we have, and they're right next to each other, but they're separate applications. Okay, so the next one we have, um, and they're right next to each other, but they're separate applications. Our wetland permitting exemption reviews I just spoke about, ones for the Ram Head Inn LLC at 108 Ram Island Drive. And, um, town has put together a notice of this approval, which they're requesting to construct a four foot by 20 foot ramp leading to the dock approved by town board resolution 90. The notice of this approval says no building permit is required for boardwalks and no wetlands permit would be required for your proposed four foot by 20 foot, 100 square foot walkway per shelter around town code section 192, which lists new construction less than or equal to 100 square feet as NPR no permit required in the permit table. Provided you apply to the planning board for a wetlands permit exemption. And that's why that, this is here.
Got it, got it, come.
I, um, sent around aerials, uh, historical aerials for both properties to all of you. I have one printed copy. And these are from the county GIS viewer. And in the red box in the corner, you can see that I had pegged the year, starting in 2001. And in 2001, the only thing I see there is a gazebo. And, um, I did go to the building department and looked at both files. And here's the CO for the gazebo, which dates that it had a permit in February 4th of 1988, which far predates the code.
Yeah.
So. The only other thing I see is, look, see, these are all winter photos or seasonal storage of docks. Floats, I mean. There is nothing else on the 108 Ram Island Drive property. And so I, I don't see that they ever used their 100 square feet in the past.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's proof right there.
So, um, and, and the file didn't contain anything that indicated they had ever used something in the past either. So, uh, Beth, I think we can write a memo to the town board, excuse me, to the building department and for our files. It says, uh, we feel they have rights to their 100 square foot exemption.
Okay. Is that, am I preparing that or Christina, are you, is Catherine preparing that? How are we doing this?
I, I, I think maybe the first one would be best if you prepared it, Beth. Is that right?
Sure.
And then we have a template going for it.
Okay.
Thank you. So the adjacent property at, um, is a big Ram LLC. And the address is 2 South Ram Island Drive. They're requesting, from the denial letter, they're requesting a permit to construct a new three foot by 26 foot angled walkway. Uh, approximately 84 square feet leading to the four foot by 65 foot catwalk. Remove debris located around the existing staircase and plant, not plan, plant native vegetation and bare areas around the existing staircase. And again, no building permit is required for boardwalks and no wetlands permit would be required for your proposed three foot by 26 foot, approximately 84 square foot angled walkway per shelter around town code section 1292, which lists new construction less than or equal to 100 square feet as NPR on the permit required table, providing you apply to the planning board for a wetlands permit exemption. So on the same satellite photos that I sent around, it is clear that the pool, the pool patio all predate 2001. I went in and looked at the file and there was nothing really that indicated anything in the vegetative buffer past 2001. So I am of the same opinion that they have not used their 100 square foot exemption. And they're entitled to its use.
Yep.
Do you guys all agree?
Yeah.
Yes, great.
Okay. Awesome. So Beth, the same conditions, if you're writing one, do you want to write both?
Sure. No problem.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
We have two special permit applications for 5 Winter Road and 1 Pandian Road. They are on hold for the town of our house moratorium. And so that's basically all we have. Ben, do you have any questions for us from the audience? Let's go to the Zoom audience. Okay, anyone out on Zoom have a question for us? Pam? Hi Pam, how are you?
Hi, good, very good. Um, I just want to review this Ram's Head Inn situation. There is actually another set of stairs on the property that you're probably not seeing in those satellite photographs. And there are stairs to the very north of the property that get people down from the hill onto the beach. I don't know if that ever got a CFO.
Which property is this?
Ram's Head Inn.
Which one?
On the north side of the property, if you had gone to the property site, you would see the set of stairs from where the sandy beach is and it takes you up to the inn and that's how people have gotten down to the beach from the inn and still do that today. So those are existing, so I think that needs to be calculated in. And the other thing that I heard you say is that mean high water is the wetlands boundary. And this ramp that's now part of the dock is actually connected to the dock in such a way that there's an additional about 10 square feet of new construction.
78. One second, Pam. We're trying to understand what the stairs you're talking about are.
There is a set. It's on the survey. It's on one of the surveys. I believe one of them is marked and it shows there's a platform and about six or seven stairs and then another platform onto the beach. So it's there. I don't know when it was put there and I think that you need to investigate that.
Matt Fox just mentioned to me, he remembers painting it as a child, as a young kid when he did work at Ram's Head.
So. In the seventies.
In the seventies, so it.
I don't know if the same set is still there.
If it's the same set or not, I don't know.
It wasn't very big. It was only like three or four steps or five, five steps down.
It wasn't like that.
No, it's not, but it is existing, so.
It doesn't, yeah.
It's pre, it's pre-existing.
Existing code, pre-code.
Okay.
I didn't know if that was still there.
We don't know that, do we? We don't know that until we have a CFO on that set of stairs. So maybe that needs to be looked into. And the other thing is, is that as this ramp is attaching to the dock, I know Ian, you heard me say this afternoon that that ramp should be considered part of the dock because that is part of a dock construction. And the way that it's constructed, I calculated by scaling off of the plans submitted that it's about 108 square feet, not 100 square feet. In order for that connection to happen.
The planning board is not getting into construction. We were just asked tasks with the examination to see whether or not the, they are eligible for the 100 square foot exemption is which what we have done. We are not gonna get into.
If the new construction is greater than 100 square feet, then they're not entitled to the 100 square foot exemption, are they?
If they're gonna build more than 100 square feet, then they have to come back to us with a wetlands application. But they're applying. We got the letter of denial says they're asking for 100 square feet.
It's up then to back to the, back to the, uh, building department.
Yeah.
They are asking for 100 square foot exemption. I am telling you that it's more than 100 square feet according to the plans. And the same thing applies to the big ram application. It is more than 100 square feet. And both of these applications require demolition at the site, which hasn't even been discussed. The stairs that exist on the big ram property are going to be demolished in order to put this elevated walkway in to connect to the dock. This elevated walkway.
Do you know that for a fact?
Was denied by the town board. Was denied by the town. And it's greater than 100 square feet.
Pam, do you know that for a fact that it's denied or that they're demolishing, demolishing those stairs?
They have to in order to raise, in order to connect this walkway to the stairs that will then connect to the dock, they have to demolish five steps. It's in the plans. When you look at the plans, they clearly show that. They clearly show that. They have to take away at least five steps to raise that existing stairway four feet higher so that they can go across the boulders that are along the shoreline to connect to this dock that the town approved.
So Pam.
This is why this is a full wetlands application and should be seen as such and should be reviewed as such and not just 100 foot exemption.
And the planning board was asked to see whether or not they've used their 100 square foot exemption. We are making a note that they have not. And it's up to the, when it's built and gets measured, it has to conform to the 100 square feet.
The planning board accepted a wetlands application for these two properties. I am expecting that the planning board is. The wetlands application.
Pam, this is not a wetlands application. This is just a review of, um,
Can I get this?
Of the 100 square foot excuse, exemption.
Okay, well then, then the Rams Head Inn still needs to go through the process for a wetlands application because in the resolution to build that dock, they are required to get a wetlands permit. They are required in the resolution number 90 for the Rams Head Inn dock to get a wetlands permit. And if that's not what you're doing tonight, if that's not what you're doing tonight, that's fine. You can put a public hearing up.
Pam, that was for the prior application with a much longer, five foot wide, 70 foot long ramp. They've reduced the size to 100 square feet.
It does not change the language in the resolution. It does not change the language in the resolution that says they need a wetlands permit for it. Does not change that language.
That's, that's.
I don't care that they changed.
That's not.
That's beyond our purview and what we're doing here.
You are reviewing a wetlands application here, are you not?
No, we're not. We are not.
Okay. So they're not gonna get a wetlands permit from you to do this construction as required by the resolution. That's what you're telling.
They don't need one.
Yes, they do. By the resolution, they need one. Then the resolution needs amendment. And obviously we have a situation here that needs to be clarified before anything else happens here. And you know that I have already filed an, an appeal to the zoning board on these applications.
You mentioned that, yes.
Against the, the disapproval letters that were submitted. And the disapproval letter that was submitted dated 11224 for Rams Head Inn says that it's on the plans that was submitted in December 19 of '23. So that, that letter doesn't even apply to the application before you.
It's not applications.
And the one for Big Ram was written the day the application came to your desk last.
Pam, thank you very much. We'll take this under advisement. Hello, Kim?
Yes, uh, thank you. Pam mentioned at the end that, uh, an appeal was filed, uh, as to the denial letters pursuant to 267A of the town code.
Okay.
Stays all proceedings. Stay us all proceedings.
Beth, do you want to chime in on this?
That does not apply in this situation. It doesn't apply to third parties and it doesn't apply. There's no, um, action against the property owner at this point. It's just them seeking the appeal. It's not the property owner's appeal. So that section of town law does not apply in this situation. So there is no stay.
No, I have to disagree with the attorney here because I have appealed to the town in previous situations as an aggrieved person. In the town code, I am allowed to appeal.
You're allowed to appeal. I'm not saying that you're not allowed to appeal. I'm saying that it doesn't stay the planning board's review.
Thank you, Pam.
Apparently the planning board isn't even reviewing, so.
I think we need to, I think we need to move on. Thank you, Pam. Ben, back to you. If you want, you don't have to say anything.
I mean, could you clarify where we are on these two? I mean, for the Rams Head Inn ramp of that property, right? Exempt, 100 square foot exemption for the bed of property that happens in. You deem that they have not used it and so they are.
They're, they're eligible to use the 100 square foot.
That's always there.
Have not used it previously.
And what actually would you take on Pam Demarest's comments?
There's, there's nothing for us to, to do. The issue probably goes back to the board, the town board, if she has issues.
Yeah, I, I guess. I mean, for the billing department, but we were, we were tasked with, uh, reviewing the eligibility of 100 square foot exemption, which we have done. And it seems, and.
All we have heard you have.
That was done.
She could go to the building department, maybe.
That's grandfathered in.
But explain or something or investigate there.
I, we can't, I don't think it's our place to tell her what to do.
No.
Or make recommendations.
Because all we're doing is just following the law.
Yeah.
Yeah, so make sure it was said again so it's clear.
Yeah.
For the record.
I make a motion to close the February, well, first of all, do you guys have any comments? Any thoughts?
No.
Okay. So I make a motion to, uh, close the February 13th planning board meeting. All in favor?
Bye.
Second, second in favor too.
Thank you very much.